I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Vasile?
Thanks, Mike. Hot Mike. Well, no, I didn't mean him. I'm sorry. I mean, not that you're in... Never mind. Let's continue. This week is recognized as National Emergency Services Week and National Public Works Week. Now, I want to say thank you to the men and women who have... who save lives for others to live and plant trees that'll never... that they'll never climb. What makes people run to help when others are running away? What motivates people to dig and plant, to design and build, when others just want to tear up and destroy? How should I know? I'm not EMS or DPW, but that's a great question to ask them. Or maybe just to say, "Thank you." So, thank you. I'm going to ask Reverend Stan Turner, our newest chaplain, the pastor of New City Church, to come and just pray for us.
Mayor McLeod, City Council, Chief Can and Chief Egan, City of Allen Park. Good to see you tonight. Almighty God, we come to you this evening and we thank you for your blanket of grace and mercy that covers us. And even though sometimes we experience unfortunate circumstances, even in these things, Lord God, that we wish sometimes did not happen, somehow or other, we're still able to experience your kindness, your comfort, your grace and your mercy. Thank you, Lord God, for this city of Allen Park and all of the different entities that cover us with safety and protection. Thank you for the surrounding communities and how we cooperate in order to perpetuate peace in the downriver communities. God, we ask your continued blessing upon us. We need you like we've never needed you before. Extend us your grace. Extend us your mercy, we pray, in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Michael, if you'll take the role, please.
All right. Councilman Marcos.
Here.
Councilman Blavin.
Here.
Councilman Schlag.
Present.
Councilman Valerius.
Here.
Councilman Lloyd.
Here.
Pro Tem Lally.
Yeah.
Mayor Gail McLeod.
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schlag.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. Any corrections or changes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of Tuesday, May 9th?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd. Second by Mr. Lally. Any corrections or changes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Now, we come to our presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and the good people of Allen Park. This is a special day today. It's the first firefighter I've had the opportunity to swear in as the chief. It's also the first firefighter that we are bringing on board that is brought on through our new memorandum of understanding with the union that allows us to send a paramedic to the fire academy. He has completed his fire academy and has joined us in his training period of 30 days. Probationary firefighter Trevor Dion is a third-generation firefighter. His father, Marco, who is here and will come up in a moment, retired recently from the Dearborn Heights Fire Department. After many years of service, I want to guess at the number of years, 25? 25! His great uncle was a firefighter. His brother, who will also be coming up in a moment, Reese, went through the fire academy with him in the same academy class, 72, at OCC. His younger brother, who I met last week, will also be going through the fire academy soon, as soon as he turns appropriate age. So, there'll be a full family of firefighters. Deputy Chief O'Reilly and I met his family several times now through Family Night at the Fire Academy during the graduation and again this evening. Their cohesiveness and love is apparent and it has groomed a very good young man here. Trevor is an RN as well as a paramedic. He was most recently working at Detroit Receiving Hospital in the Surgical and Trauma Intensive Care Unit. Probationary firefighter Dion played Division I Soccer at the University of Detroit Mercy. And with that, set a record at OCC in the three-mile required run, lapping his classmates around mile two. So, we have somebody here who can certainly carry the load as needed. He is fitting in very well. He's very humble. And he's got his head down and he's learning with all of our crew, who is kind enough to come here and honor his presence tonight as well while they're on duty. And so, we're very, very excited. And if I could bring up both his father, Marco, and his brother Reese, we'd like them to be present with him when Clerk Mizzi swears in probationary firefighter Dion. Which angle would you like us to answer?
All right, just turn this way. I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand. And I'm going to read this to you. You don't have to repeat after me. Just at the end, say, "I swear," "I do," or "I affirm," whatever you feel most comfortable with. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan and that you will endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of the City of Allen Park, free from partisan distinction or control and that you will perform the duties of full-time firefighter to the best of your abilities, so help you God? I swear. All right, congratulations.
Hey!
The whole family, let's move materially for quickness. And then, we'll take some more in the hallway.
Chief Can, before you retire to the hallway, I think that I'd like to let any council members make comments if they would like, since they always seem to depart before they get a chance. So, I'll start with Matthew.
I just want to extend congratulations and thanks, not just to you, but your entire family. From just the short amount of time and listening to Chief Can talk about you and everything that you've dedicated your life to, it's fabulous that you decided to come here and join Allen Park Fire Department. And we just thank you and your family. Your family especially for raising such a remarkable young man with dedication. We just are so happy that you are joining us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Likewise, I think you'll find this is a pretty amazing city to work in and be a part of. Grew up here my whole life and have my family here. And one of the reasons I sleep well at night is because of people like you, as Pastor Pat said, that are willing to run into danger while others are running out. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I also want to thank you for joining the forces of Allen Park Fire Department. I know you'll be a good asset to the Fire Department, especially with that chief with you in you, no problem. You'll be fine. Thank you very much for coming in.
I just want to continue the thank you train by saying thank you to your service and your resume is certainly impressive. I'm sure it will continually shock us and impress us with accomplishments that you'll surely do. So, thank you for joining and thank you for your family for... Family of firefighters, that's... I can never get sick of hearing or seeing stories about when we swear in a new firefighter or police officer. It just warms this councilman's heart. I know that's cheesy, but it is what it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll keep it short and sweet. Thank you for what you do and thank you for joining Allen Park. And keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Welcome. I'm amazed at the experience you have, being RN. Usually, we don't get that kind of action until way down the road. So, it's really welcome to hear now and greatly appreciated and look forward to adding Reese very soon. I'm sure there won't be any competition. But welcome. Thank you very much for picking Allen Park. Appreciate it very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will just add to that. We are very, very happy to have you. And what a tribute to you and your family. Very wonderful to see. Poodles to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much, everyone.
Hey, now, we come... We're going to open a public hearing. Presentation of the fiscal year 2023-2024 proposed budget.
All right, so I am here tonight to present the 23-24 City of Allen Park budget. So, for next fiscal year, we have a budget of $25,437,030. Fifteen million of that will come from property taxes. We have 1.7% coming from the district court, 4 million coming from state shared revenue. And then, we have about 1.2% coming from the licenses and permits. The general fund expenditures are... We do have a balanced budget, so that is also $25,437,030. Forty-four and a half percent of our budget is public safety at $11 million. Parks and Rec makes up 5% at 1.2%. The district court is at 1.9%. Our debt service and other transfers is at almost 2.8%. The city administrator, attorney, mayor, council is at 1.6%. Public services and city hall, which would be DPW, is at 2.4%. Finance department, cable, treasurer, clerk and assessor are about $1 million. And then, retiree healthcare is close to $3 million at 2.985%. All the other funds are also budgeted, balanced budgets. 13 million for water and sewer, 863,000 for the library. We have 883,000 for capital projects. The brownfield is at 2.5 million. The community center debt will be 426,000 next year. Building department is at 714,000. The DVA is at 1.9%. Rubbish is at 2.1%. Major and local streets are at 14 million. That one is quite high for what we would normally see. Same with water and sewer is quite high. That has to do with the road millages, the reek and Rosedale and then the water main on Rosedale. And then, 81,500 for forfeiture. So, I always like to put this particular slide in the budget presentation to show the difference in our taxable value. So, next year's taxable value is 939 million. In 2007, our taxable value was 1 billion 89 million. So, about 14 or so years later, we're still struggling to get back to that same valuation. With that said, I would definitely like to thank the citizens of Allen Park for making the police and fire millage permanent because that has done a tremendous job of keeping the city of good. The five-year capital plan. So, for police, we have $20,000 for MDT replacement and software upgrades, $160,000 for police car replacements. Upgrade of equipment is at 10,000 and upgrade of technology is 25. We have $170,000 budgeted for an ambulance. Recreation has $12,000 for ball field repairs and we have $53,000 for a roof repair, $6,000 for fitness center equipment and $250,000 for the arena bleachers. Department of Public Works has requested a field tractor for 35,000 and this fuel station at 142,000. The other 50% is in the water department budget. So, we will be moving the fuel station from behind the fire station where it previously was to the new DPS station. And that is a... will be a needed upgrade after, so I believe it's 20 or 25 years old and there are extra reviews that have to be done older than it gets and it gets more expensive to ensure. The building department has $15,000 for computers, data conversion and software. There's $850,000 for a water main replacement in the water and sewer department, $60,000 for sewer easement machine, the other 50% of the 142,000 dollars for the fuel station, $400,000 for sewer lining, which is the practice we've been doing for the last several years, and then, $350,000 for the basin upgrade. This chart is our city debt. So, for next fiscal year, the total city debt is 4.2 million that will be paid. And then, water and sewer... It's a lot. Most of the water and sewer has to do with debt that has been... It is our share from Wayne County debts that are issued. We do have a 2005 debt of our own. We have the 2020 capital improvement bond and then, the 2022 capital improvement bond, which is the reek water main. $80,000... $80,195 is the judgment levy from 1993. We will not need to levy that next year. We have the money available to pay off the remainder of that debt. The proposed water rates are a total of a 6.2% increase. So, the water rates currently are 4.61% and we're requesting a $4.77 rate. $5.36 for sewer, requesting a $5.89 rate. That is a bimonthly increase of about $9 for the average consumer who uses about 13 units bimonthly. The proposed water rates come from a water study, water rate study that was commissioned four years ago. This is the last year of the rate study. We will have... We will be requesting to get another study done. So, they take into account capital improvement needs, rate increases that will come from DUO and Wayne County and salaries. You know, they kind of look at it all. They break everything down between what water costs are and what sewer costs are. And that's where we get those from.
Real quickly, just so ultimately, we are taking in more money than we are spending. So, we have... We are not incurring... Is that correct?
So, we do have a balanced budget for next year, yes. So, we have allocated all the money that is projected to come in. We did have... The inflation was at 5%, so the taxable value did go up. And that was quite helpful because also our expenses has gone up significantly more than the 5%.
And that is the reason why our taxable value has not been... Like, why we're not getting as much money as we had in 2007 is because the headly amendment to the Michigan Constitution makes it so that it only goes up incrementally, depending with inflation, correct?
Right. So, your taxable value, if you stay in your home, can only go up 5% or the rate of inflation, whichever is lower. Historically, I'm not sure we've... This is from Prop. A. So, I don't believe since that has taken effect, maybe once or twice. Not in my time. Since I've been doing this, it's typically around 2%, 2%. So, yeah. So, the only time that that changes is if you move out and someone new moves in. They have an uncapping. And so, that discount that you were privy to, they are not. And so, they occasionally get a very sad bill if they purchase from somebody who has been living in their home for quite some time.
Thank you.
Could you repeat one more time the difference between our current taxable value and the historic? Hi?
Yes. So, we were at 1 billion 89,139,203 for taxable value in 2007. We are currently at 939,288,914.
Any other council questions? We opened up a public hearing for this? If anyone wishes to come up, ask a question about the budget?
Good evening, City Council Mayor, through the chair. Can you please explain to our citizens the total amount that we are in debt? Not yearly, the total amount right now. The whole entire debt. Our total debt.
All right. So, the government funds have $32,570,000 in principal owed and $13,408,000 in interest.
So, what's the... Excuse me?
A total of 46 million. That is for the government funds. The component units have a total of 8,944,000 outstanding. And then, the water and sewer funds have a total of 23,819,000.
What's the total?
77?
Thank you.
Me as a citizen, that's what we want.
77 million.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Dan. What's our intentions of trying to pay off that debt? And not only that, is it sounds to me like our debt is almost double. The interest is almost double in some areas than what our actual debt is.
So, for each of our bonds that we had the ability to refund while interest rates were good, we have. The only bond outstanding that does not have what I would consider a favorable rate, which historically, it is still a good rate, is the 2015 debt. And that has a make-whole clause in it. So, we don't... I have reached out to Baird several times, especially when we did the reek road, water and the reek road, Rosedale bonds. We had a stellar rate of 2.25% on those. But they said it was still was not favorable to refund in 2015. But every bond that we have the capacity to refund, we have refunded. So, like the debt that is issued by Wayne County, we can't refund those. Wayne County would have to do those.
I think really, we, the citizens, need to be informed about this more often than just at the beginning of the year or at the end of the year. We need to know what the total is all the time and what the plans are ready to pay it off. Because, yes, it's us citizens that are paying this. And, yes, the home values are going up in certain areas. But my taxes have gone up. I pay more in water right now than I ever have. And I understand you're planning to go ahead and do another rate increase. Okay? And that's all over Facebook. So, I believe that we should be informed, you know, for information like that. I want to thank you now for giving that information. Now, we know what the total, total debt is. What's the total debt on... Let me ask you this. What's the total debt for our... And nothing against nobody because it is a debt that we have to pay for our retirees. That's outstanding, isn't it? Does that come with our city or is that just them?
I'm not sure. We don't have any debt. There are no bonds issued for the retirees.
Okay.
I'm not positive.
It's an obligation. We have obligation to that.
I mean, we do have an OPEB report that we do evaluation annually with the audit that they do. I believe the last valuation was 38 million, which was down, I think the year prior was 44 million.
Okay.
So, every year, there's a valuation. We have the same valuation that's done for our pension fund. And so, there's a slight difference between the pension fund is 88 or 90% funded. The pension fund has always been required to have contributions made to it. The State of Michigan, it never had that same requirement for the post-employment healthcare. They have implemented guidelines for... You do have to do a reporting. So, if you are under 40% funded for your OPEB and if you are under 60% funded for your pension funds, you have to file a report with the State of Michigan. We are under 40% funded for the OPEB, not for the pension fund. However, we have been contributing $500,000 since 2015, 17? So, we have been making good progress on that. We are... I know it doesn't feel like a lot, but we are now 9% funded, which we were 0% funded a few years ago, and the liability continues to decrease. The liability to... is a bit different for the OPEB funds. With the pension fund, you know what the dollar is and you know what the benefits are and you can project that out a bit easier than you can project out what healthcare costs are going to be.
And healthcare is very expensive for all of us and we understand that, okay? I would like to thank you for, you know, what you do. And I'd also like to thank Mark Hibi for the amount of... And the department has for the amount of grants that they try to get. I think that's one of our only ways to really try to go after a lot of this. And we also need to try to control our cost. I hate to say it. You know, I think our cost, you know, what we see. I know we needed new equipment and I know we needed new vehicles and everything else. But are we close to not having to get those anymore and let them go for about five years? Like, I don't buy a new truck every single year.
So, yes, but you don't want to put yourself in a position where you have to buy all of the cars every five years.
So, how are we?
So, we have put ourselves in a position where we can stagger it. So, previously, we weren't buying new cars. And so, all of them are broken at the same time. And so, ideally, you're only replacing one, maybe two cars a year tops. And that, you know, that's a significant cost savings. However, I, of course, with the current inflationary pressures, those cars have gotten sadly significantly worse.
They definitely have. Well, thank you very much. Have a great day. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Obviously, what you've done is given us a balanced budget, which I think is required by the state, right?
That is correct.
So, so that really means meaningless to most of us.
Well, there is no use of fun balance to balance the budget.
There's what?
There is no use of fun balance to balance the budget.
Okay, well, later this year, when there's some crisis and overtime goes through the roof like it does every year for reasons lost on most of us, fire, police, whatever, suddenly we have these extremes of, and I've seen over the years, the overtime being way, way, way over budget. Obviously, we're no longer in a balanced budget. How do we end up at the end of the year balanced in that case?
Um, so, so I will come through in, at the last meeting, and there will be budget amendments. So the budget is adopted on a department basis. So while overtime might be over budget, there's probably a handful of lines also that are under budget. So they end up falling in line.
So you're saying that it's all going to balance out? So why don't just balance it out at the beginning of the year and elevate the overtime, knowing that it's going to be higher anyway, and cutting the other departments?
Right, so I do the best I can to budget whatever overtime is, will be.
Okay.
But I don't, I can't predict injuries.
On May eighteenth, the Court of Appeals ruled against our city for the retirees' association lawsuit, okay? And as far as I know, we've spent almost a million dollars litigating a matter that they blamed on Joyce Parker, blamed on the city, blamed on the anti-union crowd, or whatever you want to call it. So now there's an opinion. I guess my question is, what are the financial consequences if you don't appeal it to the Supreme Court? And God knows, if you appeal it to the Supreme Court, it could be another half a million dollars or who knows what. Where do those monies come from to take care of that?
You know what, just through the chair, Dennis, and you're asking good questions, but this decision just came down and this council hasn't even seen the decision. Amanda hasn't seen it.
Public, you can look at it.
So it's, I guess, you, you, it is a public decision, promise, I don't know.
We haven't met with.
And we haven't met with council yet, so you're saying, how's the city going to deal with it? At this point, we don't have enough information to come up with a plan to deal with it. But I can guarantee you, this council will deal with it.
Okay, but pardon me if I take a little umbrage at what you're saying about we haven't had a chance to discuss. It doesn't sound like you have a chance to discuss very much with the council because they vote on things after they've been done. So what's?
Not out of, you're out of order, sir, you're out of order.
Let's convince me that you won't move ahead with some grand plan without consulting the council, let alone the citizens.
Sir.
I know you don't like what I'm saying, but these are things that need to be said.
Wait, I, we're here for a public hearing on the budget that's proposed for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year.
Okay, let me ask it this way. How much money have you set aside in the budget and legal fees for extraordinary events such as perhaps a payment necessitated by a, a court decision?
So what will end up happening is the auditors will do a review. Again, we will have to meet with legal counsel to, nothing can be done until we know what legal counsel is recommending and what the council decides to do. What happens during the audit is they reach out to all of our attorneys and they ask about pending litigation and where it stands and what the prospects look like. And at that time, they have a discussion with us, they have a discussion with the attorneys as to what they think that will be. At this time, we don't have anything, because I, I, I know.
I understand, I understand.
It happened on Thursday.
Pending litigation at this point in time, still.
Pardon?
It's still pending litigation.
Well, I guess if you're going to refile, it would be, yeah. Okay, thank you very much, that's unhelpful.
There's no one coming forward who'll close the public hearing, and I will ask for a motion to adopt the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Any comments or questions from council? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We, to some organizational business, because of a scheduled conflict this year, the Prism Club will not be able to join us until next council meeting, but I will read the proclamation for the LGBTQ Pride Month of June twenty-twenty-three. Whereas the city of Allen Park supports the rights and dignity of each person and appreciates the importance of equality and freedom, and whereas the nation was founded upon and is guided by a set of principles, which includes that every person has been created equal, that each has rights to their life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, and that each shall be accorded the full recognition and protection of law, and whereas the city of Allen Park's lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ community are a vital part of all fields and professions and contribute to a stronger community, and whereas fifty-four years ago on June twenty-eighth, nineteen sixty-nine, at the Stonewall Inn in New York City, a courageous group of citizens rose up against harassment and mistreatment, setting in motion a chain of events that would become known as the Stonewall Riots and the birth of the modern LGBTQ civil rights movement, and whereas while we as a society at large are slowly embracing new definitions of sexuality and gender, we must also acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital in order to end discrimination and prejudice. Now, therefore, I, Gail B. McLeod, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Allen Park, do hereby proclaim June twenty-twenty-three as Pride Month in the city of Allen Park and encourage our residents to reflect on the ongoing struggle for equality that members of the LGBTQ community face and celebrate the contributions that enhance our city. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Allen Park, Michigan be affixed this twenty-third day of May two thousand twenty-three. Thank you. More organizational business.
I always have to follow the toughest stuff. Presentation of firefighter as well, so. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Quick updates on a couple of projects going on here in the city of Allen Park. Rosedale Boulevard reconstruction project. Today, hard rock concrete, they poured from Champagne Road intersection to Oceana Avenue, roughly around eleven, thousand eleven hundred linear feet, seventy mixer trucks, so about seven hundred yards of concrete plus. So that has now been, been poured. This, this pouring today should allow the Champagne Road intersection open by the first weekend in June. So that'll make some people happy. It has been an inconvenience, I do apologize, but progress is being made through the road being improved there, so. They'll continue to remove the old concrete from Oceana Avenue towards Southfield, they're working north. So when I go through, there was a, I know somebody was complaining before, I'm not in the Allen Parker, my blood pressure's high enough, isn't it? They started at the intersection of Southfield and Rosedale, they worked their way south to Champagne, then they flip around and they're going to head north now. That's the way the paver machine works, and so that's why you may not see some work being done down at the Cleophas and Philamine Boulevard area, because they're working their way north, they'll be back down there. They're going to get done with this project. We started pouring concrete April twentieth, and we have now poured six thousand, I think it's going to be total of ten thousand linear feet of concrete, plus a little bit more. We've already poured six thousand linear feet, so I'm going to commend Card Rock Cement, done a fantastic job. Also a part of that project, the driveway approaches on the west side of the road, so this side of Rosedale, each direction's going there, have all been poured, as well as the side street repairs that they've included in that project. And that's including Philamine, Jonas, Belmont, so forth, those have all been done. I'm going to reiterate again, Rosedale Boulevard will be closed at Southfield for the, Southfield Road for the duration of the project. The reason that road has been closed is for the safety of the workers and it has worked paramount. That's why they're being able to get through this project so fast and not having the residence, traffic, residential traffic going through there. Apologize, I know it's an inconvenience, but it's going to make a, will a difference when it's done. Reek Road Water Main, so I haven't upset you already with the Rosedale project, we're going to get you going on the, on the Reek Road project next. That project is scheduled to begin after Memorial Day, that's going to be starting at Goddard Road and they're going to be working their way north on the Water Main. There'll be no through traffic and only traffic for Reek Road residents is going to be allowed. We've posted a couple of maps to kind of show where those, where there's going to be some crossings. You'll be able to cross it at Wick, you'll be able to cross at Moore, you'll be able at those two locations, and then Goddard and then Allen Road. So please avoid that area. There'll be no crossings at Malon. I already had a complaint coming from the manager in Lincoln Park that ruins his running route, but I told him, he's going to be running on new concrete eventually, so we're getting there. So a little bit of inconvenience again on that one, but it will be worthwhile in the long run. Paris Avenue Water Main, Brico Excavating has completed the installation of that new water main and the new water services on Paris Avenue. This was from Allen Road to the dead end east of Lawrence Avenue, and that is entirely all on service now, it's all operational now. So very good to have that project done, and now we start on Paris Avenue Road reconstruction. So Savoie Cement is planning this, we're planning to start that project yesterday with the installation of the storm sewers, and so there's no access there, it's local traffic only. So people are encouraged to use other, other routes to get to the, I think there's a church back in the back, daycare, and a lot of residential, so we do apologize again. Trying to make progress on getting the roads fixed, they're desperately in need of repair, so. Concrete sectioning, Savoie Cement will begin after July first. The area that they're going to be working on concentrating this, this season is going to be E Course Road area between Pelham and Roosevelt. So that'll be intermittent, as we get through those streets, I'll announce those as we go along. And then City Hall will be closed here on Memorial Day, May twenty-ninth, for, that'll be next Monday. I might just take a moment here, I know, inform the council, but I'm going to take a proud father moment if I can for one minute. Was able to watch my son graduate Sunday, Mother's Day weekend from Syracuse University. He graduated from the S.I. Newhouse School of Public Communications. He told me when he was going through this, that these are a lot of important people that went through this school, Mike Trico, Sean McDonald, McDonald, who's in ESPN, Ted Koppel, Barbara Walters, Dick Purton, and himself. So, so we'll see what's going to, where he's going to lead. At this point in time, he's still in Syracuse, but he's got to find an apartment in New York because he's going to work for a little network owned by MLB. And so be working with the MLB Network, so I'm really happy for him on that. Really a good moment for us that he's going to have a job.
Congratulations.
Thank you for, thank you for indulging.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept and file?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally, signed by Mr. Schleck. Any comments or questions?
My only question is the update of the flags in front of City Hall.
Yeah, Councilman, we had good news on that, is that we did, signed agreement with, for the proposal from Haddix to make those repairs. So that was done, I believe that was last Wednesday or Thursday that we signed on that to get that all taken care of. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks it'll be all wrapped up.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Now we come to public comments, where you may come up and speak. Want your name and the street on which you live? We do not want to have your full address. You're limited to four minutes and just be civil.
Madam Mayor, City Council, my name is Richard Gadigan, and I'm with the Vietnam Veterans Memorial and Beyond, and I'd like to make a few comments in regards to the upcoming Memorial Day celebration. But I'd also like to express my appreciation to Chief Khan and his department for their service to the city. Our family has required their service throughout our years here in Allen Park. So I'd like to give the clerk some papers to pass on.
And I have copies for you, but I have, I'm going to use it. They're more important than I am. They've gone.
I think I've provided your attorney one as well. Good?
And if you withhold these until the end, I guess I don't have to provide what you've got, you've got one here.
All right, I first off want to make mention that the, the Memorial Committee is alive and well. We are proceeding with our fundraising efforts. I'd like to mention that we have made four presentations to the Michigan Riders Association. It's an American Legion post in regards to a bike rally that we're going to organize later this year. I've been to Garden City, Trenton, and Wyandotte, and I've made one phone and email conversation with the Michigan Patriot Guard in regards to their participation, and they all want to be kept informed upon this ride that we're, that's going to take place. If I may, I'd like to introduce a gentleman by the name of Yari Villanueva to, to you and those who that are present at our council meeting. Yari, Yari Villanueva is twenty-three-year ceremonial trumpeter. He's a drum major, staff arranger with the U.S. Air Force Band in Washington, D.C. He sounded TAPS over three thousand times. He's a Civil War reenactor and historian. He's a curator of the TAPS exhibit at Arlington in twenty-twelve. He is considered our country's foremost authority on U.S. military bugle calls and the bugle called TAPS. Yari writes, there's a story about TAPS. There's a wonderful myth about the origin of TAPS. During the Civil War, it says there was a young soldier killed while fighting for the Confederacy. His father, a captain in the Union Army, came upon his son's body in the battlefield. In the pocket of his son's uniform, he found the notes for TAPS. This is a great story, but it's just that, a story. Through Yari's research, intensive research, he's come up with the true origin of TAPS. Union General Daniel Butterfield and Brigade Bugler Oliver Wilcox Norton revised an earlier bugle call to create the twenty-four notes that we use today called TAPS. This quickly spread throughout the Union Army and was soon used by the Confederates to signal the end of the day. Late that same year, at a battlefield funeral, Union Captain John Tibble, head of a forward artillery battery, ordered it played for a cannonier killed in action. Not wanting to reveal the position of the battery, the captain substituted TAPS for the three rifle volleys fired over the grave. Also for City Council, I have a lapel pin that just has recently been made. I'd like to ask the clerk to pass that out to you. It has our emblem that we are using for this project. I think previously you've been explaining the significance of what's on the emblem.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Council, uh, fellow Allen Parkers. Uh, my name's Aaron Agamire. I live over on, uh, Balfour over here. Uh, I won't take up too much of your time. I just know, uh, there's been discussions lately about what's gonna happen with the Dollar Theater Park, um, and I know a lot of people wanna use the course for tax purposes, uh, but I genuinely believe in the city and its beauty. Um, we need more public land, not less, and, uh, more areas for people to use that area freely. Therefore, I hope that you continue to invest in this city with some of the proposed plans for that theater lot, um, and hopefully bring in more people to visit the downtown area, not just to shop. We don't need another strip mall with another pizza place. So personally, that's all. I just hope you consider some of those other proposals so we can have a new beautiful public lot that people can use freely in the summer, winter and all throughout the year. Thank you.
I second that. Third.
And I fourth. Good evening. I'm Melissa Lambert. I live at 7638 Winona. Um, I'd also like to, um, echo Aaron's sentiments. I really appreciate what the plans are right now for what's going on with the Dollar Theater. I think this is gonna be a great public space, a wonderful spot for families, um, for seniors, for children to gather. Um, I love the, the outdoor amphitheater idea. I love the, um, the farmer's market shed. I think it's going to open up a lot of possibilities for our city. I think it's also going to bring revenue for the businesses that are downtown because people will be in that space. They're gonna use the restaurants, they're gonna go to the shops. Um, I think it's also going to, it, it increases the value of our city. People that live here will want to stay, um, new residents will want to come in. I think it's something that we've needed for a long time in order to compete with other communities in our down river area. Um, and I think, I know it was a difficult decision. I know that it continues to be a difficult decision for you to, and I appreciate what you're doing and the work that you've put in. I know there have been a lot of proposals and, um, I, I hope that these plans go through. And while I'm up here, um, additional park improvements, just as suggestions, um, the pickleball court at Sudman, I don't know if that, there's plans for that to be fixed or improved. Um, also a splash pad would be a, a great addition. I know that they are astronomical as far as cost, but a lot of communities have those and maybe charge a, a small entry fee for community members to use. Um, a dog park, tennis courts, anything else. And we've done, we've done a lot of great things with the parks for kids, adding, um, equipment, but I think we need to add more facilities in our parks for everybody, not just our young, our young children. Um, and then finally, thank you very much for the Pride Month proclamation. Appreciate that. Thank you.
My name is Robert Bencher. I was here two weeks ago requesting assistance, uh, problems with city trees and I received no response. The only response I've got, I had to bring my, uh, daughter from Buffalo, New York. She is the one who arranged four years ago for the city to take care of the three city trees on my property and she's the one that arranged it. And the only feedback I had, one councilman, obviously called her, they all claimed the same old story. The trees are no responsibility of the city. And this is the Paula, or...
I'm Patricia Thompson-Bencher.
Right. I got six daughters, so it's hard to read. And I'm 93.
Ten children, ten children.
But we will be here after the meeting. Anybody wants answers and what violations of the law the city is doing, she is the one can give you the answer.
Good evening. Like I said, my name's Patricia Thompson-Bencher. I'm here to speak on behalf of my father, Robert Bencher. As you're aware, what transpired at the meeting on the ninth, I would like to start with, uh, Mayor McLeod. You yourself at that meeting stipulated to everybody in this room that trees on your private property are your responsibility to maintain. You made a stipulation at that meeting, the only time the city maintains a tree is if it's on a easement. My father has three easements to correct some people. Uh, Dan Lloyd, I apologize, and Joe Curver, um, he has three easements on his property and the city has come out and maintained those trees. Since the ninth, I was told yesterday, those easements are now a utility easement. I've never heard of that. There's nothing in writing to stipulate or show that. These trees are a safety hazard. The tree had literally fell the one time after I complained to the city, they came out, they trimmed those trees. The tree, half the tree fell and landed on the chair my father was sitting on. He's 93 years old. God blessed him, he was smart enough to get up to go get a spade shovel and walk 10 feet away as it smashed the chair that he was sitting in. It'd kill him. Are you waiting for a fatality to happen here? I would really appreciate if you would take responsibility as a city. I was considering moving back to Allen Park. I don't know if I want to. I'm very upset, as you can tell. My father's life is not worth no city tree. I'd appreciate if you could at least send somebody out from the public office building. They're the ones who have determined it. You, today I was told by Deb, the administrator, there is three easements on that property. Nobody has seen it before. Joe, who came out in 2020, came himself personally, looked at it and said, never seen an easement in a lot like this in Allen Park. My father's house was one of the first houses built. That's why you've never seen one. I would appreciate if somebody would come out and address this problem. It's under the Michigan Safety Hazard laws and it's the Michigan Tree laws. You should be aware of this. There's no exceptions. An easement, all of a sudden in one week, it's a utility easement? No, it's your responsibility and I would appreciate if you would address it. Otherwise, we are seeking legal action and we shouldn't have to proceed that way. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Don't you get sick of hearing those kind of things, week after week, month after month? Doesn't Charles get sick of hearing about the lights on the flag that are required by any appropriate citizen patriot? It takes months and months and his constant badgering just to be saying, yeah, it's coming next week, we got a contract. What I came tonight to talk about is something I asked Mike to distribute to you. I had three simple questions about this park business. Since none of you wanna say anything about it, I, I asked you to try to avail yourselves of a couple minutes of your public comment period and answer these simple three questions. Did you know about it? When did you know about it? And do you think that's the way we ought to operate as a city? Coming up with grand gestures and plans and irrespective, I respect the people who disagree with me. I, I have 100% respect for them. If they choose to think that that's the best approach, God bless them. I think that's great. I think there's others who disagree with them as much as I do, but that doesn't mean they shouldn't have a right to voice their concerns and their, uh, optional opinions on the matter. The point is, we don't get a chance. This was done, I believe, by Mr. Kibby, perhaps with the handholding of Ms. McLeod and maybe Mr. Schleck. I don't know. I don't think any of the others of you knew this was happening and I hope that I can hear some honest response later on because when you bring something in and put up your signs and your video after the fact, after the grant has been applied for, that's not the way you do business. I think it's probably illegal, frankly, but regardless, it's, what you've done is done now. I pray that the grant won't be funded so that we can have a chance to actually have a public s- a series of meetings where the public can have a, some input into this matter. And as for my earlier comments, I'm not gonna bring them up again because it caused such upset with our mayor and attorney, but these budgets, you know, that's great. We have a balanced budget. Well, of course we have a balanced budget, that's required by law, but what happens when the unimaginable happens or when the anticipated happens, like overtime, like lawsuits? What if this man had been killed? Poor fella fighting the city for years over a lousy couple of trees. Oh, just go down and cut the damn things down. What's the problem? You worried about spending a few hundred dollars, a few thousand dollars when you spend $5,000 on a dog and pony show here to put up a video and a, a, uh, screen, picture of a park that nobody knew about, including yourselves? So, please, do yourselves a favor. Stand up, answer my questions if you have the ability to, or you have the guts to, or the sand to do it. Please, I'd like to hear from each of you, the mayor and all the council mares. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tim Astemberg, Moborn Avenue. Um, in walking, I just wanted to bring this up. I'm not sure if you've, um, I'm sure you've observed it and maybe I've missed it in, in an update, but the, uh, the cold patch or the, um, it, in downtown Allen Park, it looks where perhaps where utilities have been changed out. Um, I'm just concerned, uh, about, uh, the events that are happening in the downtown area because they are trip hazards, in fact, uh, it was just really poorly done and that may have been a DTE issue, I'm not sure. I haven't heard in the last several council meetings if that's been addressed and I apologize if it was, but, um, if you could please touch on that later or perhaps get ahold of me, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. This is Ray Mcgusson, Quant. Some quick questions. I want to thank, uh, having a public comment area during the budget and actually we got answers. I asked a simple question and it was answered. It was answered then, not later on. So, when I come up here and I ask questions, please give us some respect and I understand that it's, it's what it says. It says comments, but you know what? Answer us sometimes. For the older gentleman who came up last week, I mean, two weeks, a week ago and came up and he was cut off, any of you have the right to extend the time. You have that right to ask, well, I asked, extend the time for the gentleman. Simple. So, I'm up here for a couple of things. My trash gets picked up on Monday. Last week, my trash got picked up on Tuesday at 7:00 in the morning just because they forgot to pick up our yard waste. This past Monday, our trash did not get picked up at all on Quant. Not at all. It got picked up today and guess what? There was cars on the road and it had a difficulty trying to go ahead and pick them up. The next thing is somehow our time got changed to 7:00 that I can't park my vehicle in the street on trash pickup. So, I'm gonna ask a simple question. When the trash ain't picked up, why don't we get our money back? Why does us citizens have to go ahead and wait till 7:00 to go ahead and be able to park our vehicles when it used to be at 5:00? You did that for a reason because our trash ain't getting picked up in the right time because they used to pick my trash up at 10:00 at night. So, please look at that and before my time runs out, please send someone down on Reek, west of Reek on Midway, on the area that's going around the corner, heading to Dr. Baker's house. You all should know where that is. There is a lot of, a lot of areas that are sinking and are not only sinking, they're really dropping big time and we're paying, I'm, I'm going dodge them cars through that area and I don't know how the citizens are doing it. So, please take a look at that area to find out why. But then I want to thank you very much, but please understand that what we're trying to do as citizens. Okay? That's all. Just, I understand. Thank you very much and have a great day.
Good evening. My name is Karen. I live on Garfield. When are we gonna open the museum? When do we get a key to the museum? I've been a commissioner for years. I have never been treated like this. You don't answer questions, you don't tell us anything. We get promises. I'm tired of the promises. I'm very, very upset with this council. Doesn't seem like anybody cares about your museum. I get questions every single day. I really want to go in that museum. Oh, so do we, but we can't get in because nobody will answer when we can get in. When are we gonna have a key? Simple question. Thank you very much.
Last Saturday at the Historical Museum outside, we had, um, the Late Bloomers and when everybody leaves, if you guys could look at the showcase, the Late Bloomers Garden Club has been in our city, I think, like 40 years, so there is information out there and they've been doing the Historical Museum for many years, way before I was even on it. Um, so I want to thank them. This was their first annual plant show and we had a lot of people come. Uh, Mayor, thank you for coming. Um, Dennis, thank you for coming, oh, to the plant show. I know you guys were cleaning up Allen Park too, but thank you for stopping by afterwards. I know your guys are tired. Um, they did very, very well, so they do plan on having one every year now. They weren't sure how it was gonna go, but a lot of residents showed up, so thank you residents for coming. Um, unfortunately, like Karen said, we could not get into the museum, um, so the ladies that were there could not use the restroom, which is what we wanted. So, thank you Barb, um, who's a neighbor there for letting us use her house and having strangers come in along with the ladies that were doing the plant show. Um, so I just want to say that again. Late Bloomers, thank you so much for donating plants, mulch, everything for us every year at the museum. So, it has been five months since January that I was told that the contractors were going to go in and paint. Now, many years ago when I was in college, I did professional painting out in Auburn Hills for new construction, so it would not have taken me five months to do some drywalling, which was being, was supposed to be done upstairs and to paint the inside of that building. So, again, it's gonna be five months, um, next week, so I would like to know also, when are we gonna be able to get in there? Um, we have started, Zach, the student commissioner and I have been going through some of the things in the garage, um, but again, I get phone calls all the time. I know my number is on the sign, um, and I do get phone calls all the time. In fact, that day of the plant sale, people thought we were open, so people were stopping by and I was getting tons of calls saying, is the museum open? Oh, my goodness, we're gonna stop. Um, nope, it's not open and I have told them, many people, that it will probably be another year. I'm hoping that's not true, but I'd rather say a longer date and say, oh, look, we're opening earlier than, um, to say, hey, we're opening in a couple of months and we don't. So, again, I know most of my commissioners are here tonight and we would like an answer on when we can get in. Thank you.
Nancy, I, I talked to you on Friday. I gave you the answer on Friday, that the contractor was to not receive the key from the contractor. It's just a Wayne County project. I apologize that I, I was able to receive $304,000 for the house. I apologize that I was able to get a grant for it.
Well, I'm surprised that a city, city administrator, a city building inspector...
Nancy, Nancy, this is not discussion. The contractor had it. This is a Wayne County project. Unfortunately, we are not overseeing it.
I thought this was citizen comments.
No one else is coming up. We'll close public comments and go to the consent agenda. See if... This evening's consent agenda consists of claims and accounts and payroll report and a license and permit, a parade permit for the Allen Park High School homecoming parade on Friday, September 29th, which will start at the Allen Park Middle School and come down Champaign and at Allen Park High School. May I have a motion for the consent?
Motion.
Charles Blevins.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lally. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Resolution. First resolution is to approve, extend the contract for engineering services between the City of Allen Park and C.E. Raines Company for an additional three years through August 2026. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lloyd.
Mayor and Council, I apologize. I will apologize to Mr. Nick after the meeting as well. This resolution request is for a contract extension for C.E. Raines. So, Ohio Sabeck is in the audience. Just stepped out of the bathroom. Sorry about that. Timing is everything, right? We've been very satisfied with C.E. Raines since we contracted with them initially in 2015. We had a contract extension in 2020 for additional three years, and I'm just asking the council to consider extending that contract again for another three years until 2026.
Anyone have any comments or questions?
Through the chair?
Yes.
It's just from my time being up here on council, we've had nothing but good relationships with C.E. Raines. They've done excellent work for us. So, I am 100% in support of this motion.
Any other comments?
I've been for the chair that I would like to make is that I agree with my colleague said. We've built relationship and good relationships are what make this city continue to thrive.
If there's no other further questions or comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's carried. Second resolution is to award the replacement of the Parks and Recreation Charlie Brown Building Roof to Holbrooks Roofing in the amount of $52,124,000 with funds from Capital Outlay. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Marcos. Comments or questions?
This is a request, and this, here is for the Charlie Brown facility, which is on Roosevelt, across the street from, across the street, Philomene, from the Court Building, more known as probably the Farmers Market Bureau on the side of the building. We've had this building for a number of years. We contracted with Holbrooks Roofing to give us an analysis on all the roofs on a three-time-a-year basis. They've come back with this roof being in need of repair for about a year or so. We've been able to get it into the budget this time around. So, what I'm asking tonight is to allow us to go ahead and award this contract. This is going to be out of the budget, it will be starting July 1st. The budget just approved. I need to be able to get ahold of Holbrooks, get them on setlist so they can get the project scheduled accordingly.
And this is part of that preventive maintenance that we've undertaken?
Correct.
That covers all the roofs of the city that are inspected several times a year?
Yeah, so they come through three times a year. Usually, they come in April, August, and November, and they'll give a review. I've included those reviews in your packet to see that there was a sign that it was getting worse as time goes on. And we're just at a need now to replace the roof completely.
Questions from council? Hearing non-all.
I had a long question, Mayor. What's the, how long do they insure that for, if there's any damage? How long do they have? How many years? We have for?
Typically, we, on a construction project like this, the warranty is usually going to be about 18 months by law, I believe. I have to go back, honestly. I apologize. So, the warranty would be in the longer time. Workmanship would be something a little bit different.
Any other questions? Hearing non-all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
No.
Resolution three, to approve the festivities. Commission requests to close down Allen Road from Southfield to Roosevelt at 10:00 a.m. on Thursday, August 3rd, and until 10:00 a.m. on Sunday, August 6th, for the 41st Annual Allen Park Arts and Crafts Street Fair to be held on August 4th and 5th, with the recommendations from the City Administrator and pending final approval from the police chief. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
I had one motion to my right, Mr. Slack, and a motion to my left, Mr. Lally. Comments or questions?
I have a question. Normally, that street closes down on Thursdays at 5:00. Any reason for changing it?
Is it congestion? Is it communes with vendors?
A little bit of both. So, it'll be safer to close down at a rush hour time, so it'll be closed in the morning. And it'll also allow the DPS to work during the day to get it cleaned up.
I haven't worked that show for New Year. I understand that. That's a good, actually a good idea because at 5:00, it was a mess.
Yep. And typically, they've had, I think last time, a couple of guys nearly, I'm going to say, a couple of employees nearly got hit by some irate drivers.
I believe that.
It's just not safe.
I remember.
Any further questions? Hearing non-all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is passed. Next resolution is to approve the request from Inter-City Baptist Church for their annual fireworks display on June 25th at 9:00 p.m., pending final approval of the fire department. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blevins.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Valerius. Comments or questions?
They put on a good show.
Matt sits in his backyard and watches. If there's no other comments or questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That is carried. Before we come to the fifth item in this section, I'm going to move council comments up because we will be convening into closed session. And I'm not sure how many people want to remain, so we will move council comments up to this section.
You know, through the chair, there is one, I was wondering if Dan or I could speak to the tree issue. Do you mind if we did that? So, sir, it's good to see you again tonight. And after, after you speaking last week, we looked into this. Councilman Lloyd, the mayor, our DPW, a few people in the DPW department, and myself. So, that property is, at one time, there was an alley behind your house, and what happened was that alley was vacated. Now, what that means is that alley is no longer public, it's no longer public access. It became part of your property. So, one half of that alley became part of your property and the other half became the property of your neighbor behind you. So, you have a fence around it. You have sole possession of that property. So, we take the position that, and in fact, we have to, and our insurance carrier tells us this, people take care of their own property. Now, it is true that the city reserved an easement because there is a water line that goes underneath the, where the alley was, but that is your property and it is your responsibility to maintain that. And believe me, we're sympathetic. In fact, we talked about this. We tried to find a way, you know, is there some way we can do this? But if we do this, we're going to have citizens all through the city calling us up, hey, cut down this tree. And that's why we're not able to assist you with this. So, I, I'm sorry we can't help you with this, but I definitely wanted you to understand the reasoning behind it and know that we definitely looked into this. We spent a lot of time talking about this, about five, five, six people going back and forth. I understand your daughter talked to Deb today. Deb conveyed everything. We talked about it again today. I believe Mr. Lloyd called your daughter yesterday. So, I, again, I'm sorry that we're not able to grant your request, but I just want to, I just want you to understand the reasoning behind it.
Okay, can I ask you a question then again? Please. May I approach the podium?
You know what? Why don't we talk after the meeting? Because we...
The only thing I wanted to point out is there's three trees involved. Two of them are in front of my house on the boulevard, and you're focused on the one in the back. I'm telling you, all three are city trees. And my daughter can prove it.
Sir, sir, if I could, if I could, the trees that are in front of individuals' house, that's a different aspect, okay? And when those trees, and when they're dead or dying, then the city will cut them down. And it is a huge expense just taking care of those trees. The city has a big back, back order on those because it's very expensive to do that.
The city can come and take care of them trees. They've been there three times.
Ma'am, ma'am, that's a different thing. And ma'am, I'm happy to talk about the trees in the front. I was addressing the trees. My understanding, the issue was a tree behind your house last week. And ma'am, that's what, that's what I'm addressing now, and I'll be happy to talk to you after the meeting. Well, maybe I can get the DPW individual to...
Please. The roots are literally breaking the pipes back there. It happened three days ago, from that sewer line and from the roots from the tree.
You need to, you need to talk to the DPS director. Thank you. Hey, we'll start with council comments on this evening. Mr. Slack starts.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm going to try to touch base on a lot that was said. I'll probably miss a few things. But I now want to thank everyone who came up today, spoke during public comments, as well as during our budget session comments. I want to congratulate once more to Trevor Dion for joining the Allen Park Fire Department, as we heard today. He's got a great resume and he'll do our city proud. I want to thank our city administrator and team for putting together our annual budget. It's definitely no easy feat, takes a lot of time and effort. I want to mention briefly that I'm wearing orange today because before we meet again on June 2nd and 4th, it's to honor those who lost their life or have been impacted by gun violence. So, I wear again an orange tie to represent that because the next time will be, will be after that. I also want to give a special congratulations to our graduates and soon-to-be graduates, starting with Cabrini that graduated last week, continuing on with Allen Park High School, Melmdale High School, Inter-City High School, and last but not least, Southgate Anderson High School. This past weekend, I participated in a city cleanup with the Beautification Commission. It's a great honor to clean up, and I mention it because I encourage anyone to go out and participate in any future cleanups they do, one cigarette butt at a time. It makes a big difference. But at the same time that event was going on, it was also the APEC parade. So, unfortunately, I missed that parade, but I did want to give a huge shout out for APEC for all the hard work they do to help develop the skills of our youth, as well as give them life skills that will last a lifetime. I want to briefly mention historical. I want to thank you for the grant that we put on. I know this is a Wayne County project and I know it's been tiresome and long, and we briefly mentioned that in the study session, that what's, what's it take? I mean, I'm waiting on a painter myself and that's going to be done in a week where this project is seemingly going on forever, but I've been assured that we're steaming forward and that we could maybe hopefully put some more pressure on the county as much as that will hopefully do, without being determined. As to Mr. Hayes, as I've said before, no final decision is made, that no further action that I have taken since I have voted to approve the sending of the letter to Wayne County. I did not see the rendering before that council study session. It's true, my vision for that property is to be open, inclusive for the public. Again, everyone has opinions and everyone, we're neighbors, and I'm welcome to any proposals that come up even to now. Perhaps you will have an idea that you want to bring forward. I still have not heard one. If you do bring forward, welcome to hear it. You are aware, sir, that, that I absolutely agree that citizens should have a say, and we've said it multiple times, and when we brought this up the first time, that we will have opportunity for that and we will be putting things together. There's no reason to keep mentioning and asking for it. We will do that. I will make sure that happens. Hence why we have this public comment availability. Hence why we have said time and time again, if you want something, reach out to us. Sometimes we hear nothing. We're not mind readers. We need to know what's going on in the city. I heard a lot about the trash pickup and I know that's been a big headache and I know they sent trucks in from Grand Rapids again. I don't know everything that's going on at the city at any given time, but I'm welcome to find out. If I had that ability, I wouldn't be sitting on this. But I definitely want to hear what's going on and how I can help at any given time. Because I want to remind, service is of utmost importance to me and that's why I'm up here. I can't speak for everyone else on this dais, if that's their reason or not, but mine is to serve this city. And I have my family at home waiting, that I'm sure that my wife would rather me be there, but I'm here for our city to make it sure good for the future because sitting back and letting things just pass on without putting our future in, forward, would be much different. Like I said, we're, we're neighbors. We're going to disagree, we're going to agree, but let's talk to each other. To sit in here and say where this organization is anti-democratic, I encourage someone to tell me the definition of representative democracy because I assure you, electing a city council is the exact definition of a representative democracy. On last note, I've taken quite a bit of notes on the last couple of meetings that I've heard on this project and other things, and I, I've been slow to respond and get off, but I do plan on reaching out to those individuals. I've had a couple of personal tragedies that happened in my life that kind of derailed that, but rest assured that that is top of my mind and I want to hear out. I see in the audience is one of those individuals that I plan on reaching out to. And finally, but not least, I, as a veteran, someone that served our country, served proudly, I want to bring up Memorial Day and always tell the difference between Memorial Day and Veterans Day. Seems every year, someone gets it confused and I just want to be form the public of that. We have two other veterans that I serve with proudly and I'm sure they share this as well, that Memorial Day honors military personnel who died in service of their country, particularly those who died in battle or wounds sustained from. Veterans Day honors everyone who served in the military. I mention that because this coming week, Monday is Memorial Day, and we're going to be having, or the VAW and the American Legion will be holding a ceremony at Old Veterans Hospital, the site in Southfield and Outer Drive, and that would be held noon. So, again, that's Monday at noon. I'm sure it'd be a somber occasion, but if you have the time and ability to come out and just, instead of just focusing on the grill and whatnot, come out and celebrate or honor those, the memory of those men and women that gave the ultimate sacrifice. With that, Mayor, I yield. Thank you.
Blevins.
So, I have a lot of notes. I write all down. I want to thank everyone for who came up and speak. First off, June 17th, at the library, from 10:30 to 12:00 p.m., they're going to start their summer reading kickoff, so make sure you join. For summer, I have, I have fortunate, the Saturday when they had all the events with Late Bloomers at their flower bed, or their flower event, APEC, beautification, had the cleanup. I worked that morning. I set my alarm for a nap for originally 10:00 a.m. Didn't look at it, it said 10:00 p.m. So, slept through all the events, so I do apologize. I will do my best for, especially for the beautification cleanup for next month, try to make it, for next event when they have it. To Late Bloomers, thank you for what you all do, again, with the Memorial Day ceremony. I know they do up on Hill, flower beds over there and the Historical House, so thank you for what they do around the whole city. Let's see. Lauren, DDA, thank you for what you do for the Farmers Market. Wonderful job. Went there last Friday to, wonderful turnout. It just seems like every Friday has to rain, but you know, it's, but she's doing a fantastic job of what we, what we have. GFL pickups, I, what I heard was that there was... GFL pickups, I, what I heard was that there was a shortage, just like any other place and job, and that's why it's taking a little longer to get things. It's not just Allen Park. I saw an article, Dearborn had the same situation as well. Again, Memorial Day coming up, I just, with the flagpole, it's, again, I'm going to keep, until it gets done, I will keep on saying it when it's going to get done. Because that's what my voice representative up here, because a resident mentioned it years ago, a couple of years now, and I just want to make it aware. For the sidewalks, I know it's downtown, I know, especially Cleveland Park, I'm assuming it's the DTE, that's with the digging up, with the, I'm wondering when they're going to come back and fix it. It's the same right by an Allen and Allen, right by Baskin Robbins, or some, I know they just started that, but it's just, I hope they can come back and fix what they started. Richard, thank you for this pen. Looks fantastic, and can't wait to see what the finished product is for the Memorial Day, or Memorial and beyond, for Vietnam and beyond. Road construction, I saw someone put on social media, which kind of is like, it's a short-term pain, but a long-term gain. So like, staying positive with that. For history with the Economic Development Group on this council. When they, when this council got elected, it was Gary, Pam, and Bob Stites. Then it turned me, Pam, and Gary. Then it was Dennis, me, and Gary. So it's been three different groups. The only, the only thing that I have ever heard was when it first started, again, I got like, I got liked, but got pointed up here was in 2020. The only things I ever saw on paper was two apartment complexes, not lofts, not condos, apartments. There were some things on there that, yeah, I did like. I, I know there was one that had the marquee sitting on the ground, and you know, maybe in the future, we can have a big board that's painted the same way it was with the marquee, just an idea. This plan, and then the other thing that has ever been discussed with us is amphitheater and park area landscape stuff. I totally agree with some of the residents that said that we need parking, and I said before about it. It's some things, when it comes to bringing up to, with the residents, in the past, I have said that we should have town hall meetings. Now, maybe for that certain thing, but just same with the state of the city, which I believe that we might be having one in the future. But there has just been, those are a few things that, with this project, that it's just some, just some information. When I see with people compare what happened in 2011, or bang with the movie studios versus that, we're still paying that off until at least 2045. We are, from what it says, with the two bonds cut together, $29 million. This is, was funded by the American Rescue Plan Act. And then this grant, like I said before, if we do not get the $5 million that we approved, then we go back to square one, from my understanding. I, I just, again, every four years, when it's an election year, there's always some big hot topic with, between this, it was 2019 with the floods, 2015 emergency finance manager, and Hollywood. It's, and I appreciate everyone that has come up and spoke. I have taken your notes. To the historical museum, again, I, I know I'm not, I try my best to get you guys as much information as can. I'm glad that we got grants for that house. When I, when I hear that, when this council doesn't care about the museum, I have done so much as you lays on. Giving you a new American flag, doing the bow caps for the benches, have donated ice cream for the ice social. Many things. I can go on and on. But I am doing my best, and I'm just speaking for myself. Lastly, I want to thank the mayor for the last four years have recognized Pride Month. I know, and I know a lot of people, there's a lot, a lot of groups in the city that is part of that LGBTQ, and I just want to thank the mayor that, to recognize, just like every other with cancer awareness, and those who are affected with it. But thank you, again, for recognizing it every single year since I've been up here. With that, I hope everyone has a wonderful Memorial Day, and thank those who fought for our rights, and God bless, and stay positive. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Councilman Markles.
Aaron, I think I know your family. Your uncles? Your grandmother used to work at Sears at the candy counter, and I used to go visit her every Saturday. It was free goodie day. I loved her. She was a great person. Your dad was awesome, awesome. Your grandfather, he was the best. Ray, where are you? Hey, Ray, my trash didn't get picked up yesterday either. Guess what? I'm a citizen and taxpayer, and I've got a hole at the end of my street, at the end of the driveway. I have that void every time I pull in my driveway. I get it. I really get it. You've got to remember, we're all taxpayers here, all of us. Our $96 a week that we make here doesn't cover a whole lot. But I can tell you that we're, every bit is concerned, is every one of you, about everything that's going on. I will say one thing about the council that we work with. You know, I've seen the other council meetings, I've been to them at the other place, and I've seen councils yelling and screaming at each other, pounding, swearing, cursing, all kinds of things. One thing I can say about this council is, we always seem to talk things out, and you come to a civil conclusion, and something that we all agree upon. We're all on the same program here, all of us. You know, we're not, we have, there's no end means for us here. We're trying to do what's right for the city. You know, you're asking about, when did I see the drawing? Well, I guess the first time anybody sees a drawing is when we see the drawing. How long have we talked about it? Ever since I've been on this council, we have talked with department heads and other people, command commissioners and that, we have talked about numerous projects. One of the proposals was a 52-unit apartment complex. I had, I mean, do you got a picture of that in your mind? 52-unit apartment complex in that spot? Okay, so then you've got to have at least 70 parking spots, and then you're talking about, oh, we'll just park on, we'll park on white, we'll park on park. None of that made a whole lot of sense, and, you know, we've got business, empty buildings, businesses still need to be filled. Retail right now is very difficult. You know, you can pick up, you pick up your phone, you can dial something, you have it from Amazon tomorrow. It makes retailing very difficult. So you've got to have specialty things in your areas. What we've all been trying to do is look for something, something in the middle of town, what's going to bring the people into our city? Us. There's 28,600 and some people in the city. Where do we have a common ground? Where, you know, we, it's been suggested, and I can look back at the study that was done, they said skating rink, well, we have one. They said a community arts theater, well, we have one of those. They said a farmer's market, they brought in, they suggested it was part of the study that was done. Nobody has agreed and said, this is exactly what we're going to do. We're trying to, we're trying to acquire money, and there's other people out there trying to stop us from doing that. Maybe the plan isn't perfect, because everybody, you've got 28,000, how many different ideas do you have? 15,000 different ideas. Everybody has a plan. Why not bring the city together in a central spot? You know, I'm not saying this is a great idea or it's a bad idea. I'm just thinking logically, how this works for the city. 52 apartments, or we have a place where we can have things happening for the city to get together and bring people to the city. And that's all that any of us care about right now, is the city. Nobody here is working for any other reason than that. We're here because we give a darn about what's going on in the city, and we care about everything that's happening. And believe me, if you don't think we watch every penny, come to our, come to our meetings, ask the guys if I don't ask every question in the world. If everybody's not asking about every penny that's being spent, we do. So I'll stop my tirade, because I know I'll get ripped up on Facebook, so. But the Beautification Committee, I wanted to thank them. It was really, we did North Allen Road from Southfield, we didn't quite make out a drive, it was just, we were done. We got about three quarters of the way there and back, but all the volunteers, and you can tell who really cares about the city is when you get the volunteers out there. They come out and clean the city. And cigarette butts, you talk about cigarette butts? Believe me, I probably picked up 500 of them that Saturday. They were everywhere. Even, and I want to mention that Deb Zettel, our executive assistant, she was out there picking them up. So I want to thank everybody for doing that. I want to thank everybody for attending. We hear your comments. We are your comments, believe me. We have the same thing happening to us. So again, happy Memorial Weekend. Today is Lucky Penny Day. Go find it. Thank you, good night.
Have to remember that. Angela, Charles.
That's my turn now?
Yes, Councilman.
Well, I'm going to have to say something here. About the, Mr. Hayes got up here and talked about the, that theater. Well, it began a long time ago, when we got a meeting, and I told, and I, I told, I told to the city administrator, we have to do something with that area, something. And so the man went home, made a design, and then he brought it back. It looks pretty good, just on piece of paper. Then we had a meeting at the work session meeting at the DPS, and he, we talked about different things, and then he presented this rendum of this park here, at the theater park. And to me, it looked fine. It looked good. It looked really nice. It's something that Allen Park never had. I like it. It was very good. But we have to worry about, you know, what impact is it going to be? Are we going to make any money? Who's going to run all that stuff? That's something that comes later. But then, in order for us to get the money, to get us a grant from Wayne County, which they got $170 million to give away, if you don't put in, you don't get it. So he decided we're going to do a $5 million if we could get it. If you don't get it, we go back to square number one. Square one, just like, just like Charlie said, Councilman Cleveland said. We go back to one. At least we're doing something, all right? We are doing something, and we're going to keep doing something. We all work together up here. Ain't like the ones when I was in council. And I'm pretty sure that Mr. Mizzi knows all about it. I don't have to repeat it, but I went through that, and I'm here still. I tried and I said, I'm going to run again. But I did, and I'm up here, and I'm very proud to be up here. Okay? So don't blame everybody up here, because we're all like, like Dennis said, we all pay taxes over here, all of us. And I just want to get that out of there. And then, if we, if it does something come up that we need, we have to go to the public, we will have closed session for the public to know, and give that, get them opinions to us, to get this thing. You know, I am tired of hearing this for the last couple of weeks. I understand what's going on. Nobody's doing anything crooked up here. We're all straight shooters, including me. And now, on behalf of that, I'm going to say something about the cleanup. I was, my intention was that to go and clean up and help my, help my city. Well, I made a, I got a phone call from APEC and says, why don't you come and walk with us? And I'll tell you, it was the best thing I ever did. It was beautiful. They have more kids this year than they ever did before. Go APEC. I'm serious, go APEC. Yes. And then, the, I went to, I'm getting, I'm getting excited. Sorry about that. I don't have no water here. But the, the farmer's market, what a beautiful thing. They dedicated to the veterans. You get a free whatever you buy around there, beautiful. And there's quite a few. And she, and Lauren does an excellent job over there. She does. And she keeps doing a better, a good job. I want to thank her. Thank you, Lauren. Appreciate it. The next thing, I'm not done yet. The memorial celebration that everybody talked about here today, all our brother knights that passed, we're going to have to remember those guys that passed. I had a lot of brother veterans. They all died in the field in Vietnam. And everybody should praise those guys every year, not, not just, just Memorial Day, every day. Today, we had to go, me and John, somebody else, I'm not going to mention names, we had to give clothes to the veterans that don't have a home, homeless veterans. And believe me, there's 83,000 homeless veterans in Michigan, 83,000. And the little bit we do, it helps, but we need more. Oh, and then, and then a good note, June the 3rd, there will be Kids' Day, and the Kiwanis is putting it together, and it'd be from, I think, 10 o'clock until about 2:30, 3 o'clock. And it's all for the kids. They got balloon, the balloon man going to be there, face painting, hot dogs, no hamburgers, hot dogs, pop, no beer. That's because it's kids, I'm sorry. Just kidding, man, come on. So that'd be a nice time. We've been doing this for a long time. Matter of fact, they're cleaning up, the Kiwanis, instead of having a meeting tonight, they're cleaning up over there instead of the meeting. That's pretty good. So getting ready for June the 3rd at Dula Park. And don't forget, we have a memorial celebration at the Outer Drive and Southfield at 12:00 noon, and come on down and celebrate the veterans that passed away, and all the veterans that are still alive. I want to thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you, Charlie. Mr. Lloyd.
First off, I want to confirm Dennis does ask a lot of questions, but they're all very good.
First off, I want to confirm Dennis does ask a lot of questions, but they're all very good. Um, I have to start off with an apology. As many of you know, um, the high school seniors today at Allen Park, they have to come to, uh, government meetings to satisfy a requirement. That's not my class, I don't require them to come, but one of them came up to me today, and they had, they said, uh, do you have an idea how long the council meeting's gonna go today? And I said, ah, I don't know, it depends how angry people are. And I said, probably around seven o'clock. So, I misjudged, so apologies, alright? Hope you didn't have any plans, alright? Um, uh, so I want to start off, I, I, again, like my colleagues up here, I try to take notes on everything that people say, because I think that everything bears, um, now, I, I do apologize, but I think that this is truly, and I, I know that there's at least one, um, graduate up here that had, had to satisfy the requirement of coming to Allen Park City Council and learned those lessons well, that this is truly an excellent, excellent education in how democracy works, okay? Um, and I see another one that benefited from that same lesson in, in our audience here today, and is coming on her own volition, alright? To this very long meeting. Um, so, this is an excellent representation of how democracy works, because yes, people, if you are upset, you should have this outlet to come and ask your questions, okay? To, to get your, um, your elected officials who are beholden to you to, to pay attention to them. So, with that in mind, I, I would, I'm going to try to give attention to everybody that came up here, starting with, uh, Mr. McGuson, who is one of our most faithful, um, uh, commenters up in public comments. I understand the frustration. And again, and I, I want to echo your thanks, because I am so thankful that we had, uh, Ms. Wertz that was up here, that was able to answer your question immediately. I think that that is incredibly important, that you, just like we are all responsible for our own personal finances in our home, as citizens who pay taxes, you need to know how every dollar is being spent, what you owe, and all of those things. And, and that is why I'm very thankful to you for coming up to answer the questions, and I'm very thankful to Ms. Wertz for being there to answer it. I appreciate it. And I understand the frustration, I do, that, that when you come up for public comments, that those questions aren't answered immediately. I, I do understand that. But we, we do that because we still have the business of the city to, to act. And, and I think that as, if I, if I stand, and correct me if I'm wrong, and the many times that you've come up here, and the many times that you've come up here, the people that s- sit up on this dais, and if they've not answered your questions in their own comments, they have stayed after, I, I know that we have spent, on my birthday no less, I spent an hour standing out there talking about your concerns. So, I understand that frustration, um, but it is a reason, just so we can be able to get the business of the city done. To the issue of trash pickup, just so, for your own knowledge, we have not yet changed the hours. Um, we have, we, so if, we had the first and the second reading. The first and the second reading were at the last meeting, okay? So, we have po, uh, Clerk Mizzi has posted it, as required by law. And in the next meet, I understand that some of the signs have gone up. I do understand that some of the signs have gone up, I think that that is a matter of expediency, but, so for your own knowledge, for your own knowledge, right now, the, the standing ordinance is, is eight to four, okay? So, when, in our next meeting, we will have our third and our final reading of that ordinance, and it'll change to seven to five, and it will change precisely for the reason that you brought up. Because we have residents, and every so often, when this does happen, I get those calls, just like Mr. Marcos. Um, I'm sure that everybody up here, when your trash, when your compost, when your recycling doesn't get pi, uh, picked up, people are upset, and they want to know why. And one of the reasons that we have why is, is just like everywhere in the state, and quite frankly, everywhere in the country, um, GFL is struggling to have the amount of people that are necessary to come in to pick up the trash within that confines of time. So, right now, our contract that we have set with GFL says that they can start picking up trash at seven o'clock. I know that my mom is the very first street to get picked up on, on Robinson Avenue, um, on Friday mornings. And as of, um, last Friday, that guy is parked at the end of Robinson A- Avenue, waiting for the clock to tick to eight o'clock, okay? If that guy's starting to be able to pick up trash at seven, and if he's able to go to five, our hope is, is that we won't have that exact issue that you brought up today. So, I, I understand your frustration, that is precisely why that is. I want to thank, um, individuals for coming up, and again, continuing to give us their input on what they think that should go in that Dollar Show. Again, this is how democracy is supposed to work. I appreciate that input. And, and again, if people have ideas, have suggestions, uh, Mr. Kettlehut has given us many, and I would be happy to discuss those, um, at length. Um, I personally, I will go on the record and say that I think that this is a good idea. From, from the very beginning, I, I have believed that that land, that piece of property is absolutely essential, because it lies at the center of our city and is able to connect these two different corridors that we have, Parker Avenue and Allen Road, and make that one spot, okay? Even just having it down now, it opens up that area, and it makes it feel like that downtown area is not this street and this street, but one cohesive area, and I think that once we have that open, we have opportunities for people to come do music in the streets, concert in the park, um, the Made in Michigan Festival, um, Touch a Truck, alright? Uh, the Pumpkin Patch, the list of events, the Pumpkin Patch, which has been a faithful event going on. Hopefully, we will have some additional space that we can maybe expand that, that we don't, maybe, maybe we, um, are, are growing onto it. So, I think that there's the, uh, the potential for that property. The things that they are gonna do, like one of our citizens said, is going to add to the value of this city, okay? And I do want to answer the questions, because I, I have a great deal of respect for Mr. Hayes. Did you know? Yes, I did. When? The first time that I remember discussing this in a work session meeting was when we were talking about the Ray McGuson ordinance, alright? Which was the ordinance, uh, regarding, um, grass seed. Um, we were not able to meet in this back area back here, so we met in that area across from the mayor's office, and that is one of the first times that in a formal meeting, we were discussing what it is that we want to go into that property. That meeting was posted, it was open to the public, you're more than welcome to come to it. Now, in, in my time on council, the discussions as to what has gone into that property has been consistent throughout. This, the previous council, the council prior to this one, is the one that purchased that from MGR for one dollar. And I knew that when I ran for council, that what goes in that property is gonna be something that is going to be, um, that is going to be central to the legacy of this council, and so it has been something that has been ever-present in our minds, as Mr. Marcos has mentioned. We have had numerous conversations with Mr. Kibbe, with our many department heads who are experts in their own personal areas, and we are continuing to have those con- conversations. And so, and this is the important one that I very much want to answer. Do you think it is the best way to, um, run a government? And I have to answer that I do, because even if you dislike it, which some of you clearly do, some of you who took the time to come out to us this evening, clearly do think it's a good idea. We are having those conversations right now, and again, to Mr. Schlack's point, that is how democracy is supposed to operate. So, I can, I encourage you, okay? I'm not sick of hearing it, come back up next time, alright? We can keep, we can keep having this conversation, and we should, because that's what's best for the citizens of Allen Park. And I will continue to engage in that conversation as long as necessary, because I think that this is important, that not only that we do this, but we do it in the full light of public, and that we are continuing to have that conversation. To Mr. Bencher, and, um, to, to Ms. Bencher, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the, the second half of how you typefated a name. Thompson, Ms. Spencer Thompson. I take no pleasure in giving citizens bad news. I, I, I do not. I, I really wish that I could, um, as a councilperson, that I could give you the information that you want to hear, but I am, I'm never going to mislead you and tell you that I can do something that I cannot do. Um, and I think that, I, I understand your concerns, and again, um, like Mr. Kovir, I was under the impression during our conversation yesterday, we were talking about the single tree in that back. Um, if we're having a conversation about trees in the front, um, first off, unfortunately, I know that the DPW, we, uh, Mr. Murray could tell you exactly how many trees we're responsible for, and we've actually have a tree census, where we have, you can look up every tree in the city of Allen Park that we are responsible for, and there is a long list of ones that, um, require service. Um, but I, I promise you, if we, we have to, we look at those front ones, those are the city's responsibility. Um, we will have somebody to, to come and take a look at those and make sure that we, um, take care of them if that's necessary. Thank you. Um, to both Karen and, and Ms. Nick, um, first off, thank you for everything that you do for the Historical Commission. Um, I've had the pleasure of attending a number of your meetings, um, on, uh, le, bus, Business for Legal Affairs. Um, I think that it's absolutely crucial that we maintain our city's history, and I know that the members of our commissions, whether it be Parks and Rec, or Historical, or Beautification, whatever it may be, they, they do that as a labor of love, because they are passionate about that for the city, and it is often a thankless job. And I, I know that when, when you are, when you are coming up to speak to us is because you're speaking out of that passion, and I understand the frustration, I genuinely do. I also understand that when we have to, when we get money through the county, which is the case for this particular one, unfortunately, we are not on our timetable, we're on the county's timetable. I know that that is not the answer, again, that, that is satisfactory, that you want to hear, but again, I'm never going to tell you that I can do something, or that I can make something happen that I will not happen. Um, especially Ms. Nick, thank you so much for your leadership in that, in that commission. I have told you that privately many times, but I say it up here now, um, as be a part of the, the public record. Mr. S. Timer. Um, I believe the cold patch, um, that is the work that DT has done. As I've been walking through the seat, city, it looks like they are gradually going back and they are patching that. Um, I, uh, I will hopefully, um, touch base with Mr. Kibbe, so we can get a timetable from DTM when we can get that updated, especially as the weather warms up and we have, uh, people going through. Um, we, we want to make sure that our downtown is as beautiful as it always is, and make sure that we'll address that. And please make sure that you're getting this young man some ice cream after this, sitting in now three-hour meeting. He deserves something, a Slurpee, you make your demands, okay? Alright, because whatever it is, you deserve it, alright? Okay? Um, so, uh, I, I believe I addressed everybody's, uh, concerns. Um, and, and I know that I've said this at the end of each public comments, but it bears repeating. Everybody in this room, administration, our department heads, council, citizens, Mr. Mizzi, Mr. Kovir, everybody in this room wants what's best, best for the city of Allen Park. Everybody, alright? And we may have different pathways of going through that. Mr. Hayes, I know you want what was best for Allen Park, I know that we might have different views for that. Um, but I respect every single one buddy that's in here, and I very, very appreciative that you took the time to come in and try to make this city a better place. Thank you so much, have a good night.
It's hilarious.
It's al, it's always great going last, especially in a meeting as long as this. Uh, you know, I, I took notes too, I think I'm on page six or something of the notes. I don't want to occupy as much time, uh, like I said, beating a dead horse, but I feel like I, I do want to cover some things. I'm passionate about what I do, not only in my personal life and jobs, but I'm also passionate about what I do, uh, up here. I think it was in twenty fifteen, I went and grabbed paperwork from Mr. Mizzi about running back then, and then I thought about it, and I'm like, what the heck am I thinking? Why, why do I want to, uh, you know, use more of my own personal time, uh, in light of everything else that I'm doing? My full-time work and everything else, and coaching and everything else, and then, uh, lo and behold, twenty nineteen, I went back and got paperwork again, was fortunate enough to be elected to the city council. Uh, again, you know, I think, you know, I felt Councilman, uh, Dan Lloyd here, you know, addressed each of you individually. And, uh, Mr. Bencher, I, I'd just like to say, I mean, and I might get myself in trouble for even saying this, but I don't care. I would love to just grab, uh, my chainsaw and oil and come to your house and cut the freaking trees down myself. Uh, again, I, if, if I didn't know enough about getting electrocuted and doing all that, then, you know, I, I'd, I'd be out there tomorrow. Mr. Hayes, you know for a fact that I engage you through social media? I'm not scared to engage anyone on social media, okay? It is the way a lot of people communicate now and share views and, and comments. None of that intimidates or scares me. I'm gonna do my best to answer questions that I can answer, and if I don't have an answer, I'm gonna do my best to try to find those answers, okay? Uh, I approach your questions, Mr. Hayes, through a timeline, okay? And I wrote this stuff down because, again, I want to be accurate. My recollection and my, my views of this whole event to answer your question about when we were made aware of this. We had a, uh, uh, study session meeting on April fourth, six P.M. at DPS, okay? I even remember all the people that were present there, because originally it was us to meet with the DPS director, Tom Murray, Deputy DPS Director Bill Minor, Supervisor of Forestry Ro, and Roads Roy Shipman, Supervisor and Water Sewer Mike O'Loughlin. Uh, we also had the City Administrator present, Building Director Matt Baker, Parks and Rec Director Rob Fulton, Parks and, uh, Operations Manager Kyle Carr, DDA Director Ben Hughes, there was other people present too, okay? Our me, original meeting was simply to be there to discuss the DPS and the functions of the DPS. They provided us a ton of interesting, awesome information about what makes our DPS run. At, towards the end of that meeting, that is when the presentation regarding the theater property was presented. And that was basically, again, I'm reading it because I just want to be accurate. I spent some time during my one hour of free time at school today, kind of going through this, you know? So, instead of relaxing and planning for my next school day, this is what I did, uh, during my free hour. Uh, again, at that time, Mr. Kibbe proposed a plan. Uh, we basically looked at the same documentations and pictures that were made public. Basically, he asked city council's permission to begin to put together our funding request for that five million dollars of Wayne County ARPA funds that every city around us is also applying for. If we don't apply, we get nothing. So, I hope we get the five million personally, uh, just so we don't get left out. Uh, April fifth, it was posted publicly, the plan, okay? As well as the request that was actually posted, not only on the city government site, website, but also made available to the public. April eleventh, city council meeting, per the posted agenda for that meeting, resolution number one, as written, was resolution to ratify the Wayne County ARPA SL FRF funding request submission. The motion was adopted, okay? Uh, so again, uh, I don't, I don't believe that I should have to, nor should I have to hide the truth about anything. Uh, you know, I think throughout my life, I've tried to be as open and honest in everything that I've done, and I don't see that changing in my role here as a city councilperson. Uh, yes, I do believe citizen input is extremely important. Yes, we want to have citizen input, and I think, like all my council members have mentioned. You coming up today, again, I've been approached by people, uh, from the other side who think it's a great idea, as well as engaging on, in conversation with others that have definitely viewed their points in regards to why they do not think it's a great idea. And again, that is kind of how this process works. Again, I think so many good things were mentioned up here. Uh, again, I think we all take tremendous pride in what we do up here. We try our best. You know, I, I, I never thought in my lifetime that I would be sitting up here. I don't consider myself a politician, nor do I want to be considered a politician, because frankly, I don't like politicians, okay? I'm maybe an elected official, uh, and I take great pride in that, uh, but I don't consider myself a politician in any sense of the word. I'm here to do the work as much as I can for the people that put me up here, basically. The beautification commission, the events that went on, you know, uh, I, I serve as liaison for that commission. I try my best to do as best as I can, uh, with my time. Uh, I was not there Saturday, nor was I at any of the prior cleanups. But sometimes, again, it's kind of what you do behind the scenes that has as much value as that. Uh, I mentioned the fact that I, whenever I take my dog for a walk in Northern Allen Park, I take a garbage bag and a set of pickers, and I pick up the trash every single day that I walk my dog. It's not a scheduled cleanup event, but I do it every single day, okay? Sure, I'd like to dedicate two hours of my time, but sometimes that two hours is sometimes hard to come by, as I'm sure we can all understand, okay? But I'll continue, every single day I take my dog for her walk, I'll continue to pick up the trash in my neighborhood, along the entire route that I take, sometimes even change it up, just so I could pick up more trash, okay? Along with picking up the stuff for my dog, because I don't like people that do that. Uh, again, I thank everyone for coming out. Uh, I know this was a long meeting, but I think so much was accomplished by listening to your public comments. I would actually prefer our Tuesday meetings to be equally as long with this, with public comments that range from your thoughts, your ideas, your hopes, dreams, aspirations for the city, so that we could talk about those and address those. That's kind of why we're here, making that ninety-six dollars a, a week. Yeah. So, again, I appreciate everyone's time. Uh, again, thank you for everything, and with that, I yield. Uh, again, thank you for everything, and with that, I yield.
Thank you. Mike, do you have anything?
I usually don't, but I got a three-page, I'm just joking. Um, no, I just wanna touchdown on one thing, um, the Historical House. Commissioners, I, I'm sorry if you're frustrated. I could assure you, like Betty and Barb, I was there from day one. I was there when they purchased the house. Um, they gave it great hope, and then they ignored it for decades, okay? When Mr. Kibby said he was gonna get grant money and this amount, I chuckled. Because I come from the era twenty-some years ago, where when I got hired into Old City Hall, it was a temporary building. We're moving soon. Every, what, seven, eight, nine years, oh, no, no, we, this time we're gonna. But, one, I, I'm just amazed, because numerous times, the commissioners ask, help us, help us, help us. And the only one who I've ever seen jump on it so strongly is Mr. Kibby, okay? I, 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 I know you're frustrated. I heard it's a county job. Well, that's not a joke around here. When you hear you're dealing with the county, it's gonna take a while. I mean, and not to knock Wayne County, it's gigantic. And they have the same problem we do, staffing's not there. But I, I just, I'm not here to defend Mr. Kibby in any way or praise him, but I wanna say, to me, driving by as many times as I do, that house has never looked so beautiful. And I, honest to God, I just got chills, 'cause I saw Betty who nodded her head, and that was her aunt and uncle's house.
Great grandfather.
Oh, great grandfather's house. So it looks gorgeous. Like the streets in Allen Park, oh my gosh, I always forget about Rosedale, and I have to go all the way around again. Do I get frustrated at first, and then I'm like, oh, this is a good problem, our streets are getting fixed? Now, the fact it's the third time since I've worked here, that's another story, but you could blame the county for that one. Okay? So I know you guys are frustrated, and you may send communications, but somewhere there's a lack of, because if you have council liaisons, inspectors, I don't know, but Mr. Kibby doesn't have the time to focus as much on the historical, because I hear about the Historical Houses blown up here, or the property where the theater was. What people don't know, the important stuff he works on, we approved last meeting. And that was, that was the MOA, Memorandum of Agreement with the Police Department. He got the union to agree to go from only high-qualified, ready-to-go workers that we can't get. Now we're putting people back through the academy like every other city, okay? That's not an easy task. That had to be agreed upon by the unions and all the good stuff. So, I know you feel, a lot of people do. I send them an email, and I don't get a response. I have to catch and go into the john, but I understand, 'cause mine's dumb, so. But please, be patient. Nobody up here, especially administration, wants to knock what you do for this city. But please understand his frustration when he's getting attacked by commissioners, that I, I've seen this rarely where commissioners get up and attack. I, I'm, I'm gonna say that, I've rarely seen it. I'm not saying it's bad, it's your right as citizens, but there are fifty channels you could've gone through. Um, again, historical liaison, that, no offense, Charles, obviously, but I'm just, again, I'm not defending, I just wanna, I the, the frustration between the two just really upset me, because you both have great goals, three of you, Karen, you two. And, um, okay, I ended up rambling on, I'm sorry, but I just wanna let you know, please be patient. If it wasn't for him being so aggressive, that house would still be white with the paint, and it would so, thank you, Mark, and thank you, Historical Commission, and thank you all for coming out, and God bless you, good night.
Thank you, Mike. Um, I'm gonna try and make this brief, since, uh, all of my fellow council members spoke so very eloquently and covered so many topics. Um, you know, all of us up here get feedback. We get stopped in the street, we get stopped by our neighbors, we get stopped when we're in a store, we get emails, we get phone calls. So, we've gotten a lot of feedback and a lot of suggestions. I mean, when this, uh, started, there was a lot of con- casual conversations that went on, wouldn't this look good, wouldn't, you know, isn't this a great idea, how, what do you think about this, or, you know, let's, let's talk about this. We got, uh, a couple of proposals that were apartments not too thrilling, and they all wanted something, because that's not free, they're not rushing in here to, to build this, um, you know, we're gonna do this favor for you. Um, I personally had a couple of conversations with, um, um, a developer, an individual who knows some major developers, who said, uh, and this was last September, I was talking to the individual about something else. He said, well, I, I think, uh, you're, that's coming down, I might have somebody who's interested in this, uh, I'll get back to you and set up a meeting. And that was the last we heard, because the individuals with whom he was dealing, uh, weren't interested in that, nor were they interested in another project they were looking at. Um, you know, we, we had all kinds of ideas coming in. And then you got to the, the, uh, American Rescue Fund money. And, uh, that was doled out by the federal government, the states, counties, and local communities. And it's, it has to be spent and dispersed in a certain amount of time, or the federal government is gonna take it back. Now, different counties handle the money differently. Wayne County decided to handle this as a, a grant, but it's not your typical grant. And what they want is for communities to show that there's some skin in the game. So, Southgate just got a major grant from Wayne County, and their share, I believe, is twenty-seven million dollars. Now, that doesn't mean that Southgate is going to pull twenty-seven million dollars out of their budget and give it to Wayne County. On the contrary, they did what we did in our proposal, and that is, they showed where, within their various projects in their community, things that they're going to do, that they are, they're going to spend twenty-seven million dollars on various projects. So if you looked at the material that was sent with the ARPA, uh, application to Wayne County, these are projects that are in the mill. There are not going to be additional taxes, we're not doing any bonding. And if we don't get the grant from Wayne County, we are still going to replace the sewer, we're still going to replace the street, the DDA is still going to replace the streetlights, they're still going to go through with other projects, I wanna be very clear on that. Nobody's coming and asking for additional funds from our residents. The other thing I wanna mention is that, and there were some good comments here again tonight, and we, and, you know, we continue to hear them, uh, is that we had a, um, a group that was in the other day, talking to one of our other departments about our project they're working on outside of the DDA area. Um, and during the course of that discussion, the question was posed, you know, well, we've got this property over here, what do you think about, you know, putting up housing? And they looked at us and they said, no, first, you need amenities, because you need something in your downtown area that is going to draw people in. And I think that my fellow councilmembers pretty well covered, um, what that, what they're talking about and what they mean. And, and we've got, even though Allen Park is fairly well-built out, we do have a massive area of property that belongs to the schools over on Horder, that used to have an elementary school on it, um, which would be perfect for residential development. But again, um, between, uh, economics and COVID, we haven't had, we had one developer that came in, made a proposal for some homes there that we rejected, because that was not gonna be up to the quality and standards in, in Allen Park. And we were not gonna do that to our community and our residents. So, with that being said, I think that, um, hopefully, uh, we get our share of that ARPA money from Wayne County. Uh, we didn't ask for as much as, as many other people. But, um, I appreciate the fact, and I'm, I'm very glad to hear from my fellow councilmembers and from our city clerk, uh, the appreciation about the work that goes into keeping this, this city running. Uh, people have no idea the hours that are spent here, um, and the, and the time that is spent, um, and it's a twenty-four-seven. And sometimes you wonder if it's worth it, but, um, you look around and, and, um, you decide that it is, because you can look at some of the things that have been accomplished. For one, we finally, uh, got out of a forty-year temporary city hall and police department. And with that, I will, um, ask for a, a motion to convene into a closed session. Motion by Mr. Lally, seconded by Mr. Marcos. Uh, we have a roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a mo- excuse me, I have a motion by pre- Pro-Town Law- Lally, supported by Councilman Marcos, to convene into closed session to discuss pending litigation regarding the 2018 basement flooding lawsuit, as permitted under MCL 15.268 subsection E. Shall we convene? Councilman Levins?
No.
Councilman Lally? Councilman Lloyd?
Yes.
Councilman Marcos?
Yes.
Mayor McLeod?
Yes.
Councilman Schlatt?
Yes.
And Councilman Valerius?
Yes.
The yeses have it, we shall convene. And for the rocker, are they, is there a possible vote? Okay, we will be coming out, and for any of you who wanna stick around, there may be a possible vote. Thank you.